And I'll call the March 31, 2022, meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Cheryl Lee.
Present.
Ismael Harris.
Here.
Pablo Serna.
Here.
Carrie Kahler.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
Matt Lassen and Greg Sherry will not be attending. Matt Lassen and Greg Sherry will not be attending.
Thank you very much. Item number two is citizen comments. Do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, this is a time where citizens can speak on any topic that's not on the agenda. But since we don't have any of them, we will move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item three A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the February four, February 24, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Has everyone received a copy and had an opportunity to review them? Are there any additions, deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Let the record show it passed unanimously. Item three B, consider action to approve meeting minutes from March 17, 2022 Planning and Zoning Workshop Meeting. Did everyone had a chance to read them? Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show passed unanimously. Item three C, consider action to approve the final plat of West Bastrop Village, Section One, Phase One, being 25.569 acres out of Nancy Blakely survey abstract number 98, located west of FM 20 within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Lann.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so this is the first plat in a new subdivision off of FM 20. It is the West Bastrop Village Municipal Utility District. This is just south of the relatively new water tower. This first section is a little over 25 acres. We'll have 90 residential homes, nine non-residential lots, and two reserve lots that can come in at a later date and be replatted. And they will take access off of Adleton Boulevard will be the primary road through the entire development as it moves west. And that connects onto FM 20. All right, so here's a picture of this first section. We have FM 20, oops. All right, to the east here, and Adleton Boulevard along the south side. As I said, that will more or less bisect and meander through the neighborhood, sort of like Sam Houston Boulevard does for the Colony in a similar fashion. And then you have local streets that connect to Adleton as well as FM 20. So you have these streets. Then you also have some alley service to those residential homes. And staff recommends approval.
Mr. Serna, your light's on.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Our second.
Motion and a second. You please call the roll.
Pablo Serna.
Yes.
Ismael Harris.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Cheryl Lee.
Yes.
Carrie Kahler.
Yes.
Scott Long.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. I mean, the item passes unanimously. Item three D, consider action to approve Piney Ridge Section Three replat of Lot 26, being 5.535 acres out of Piney Ridge subdivision located at 152 Blackjack Lane within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Lann, you're on again.
All right, so this is the Piney Ridge subdivision on the eastern side of town, east of State Highway 95. This is in the ETJ and off of Blackjack Lane. We have two lots that were created through an improper subdivision many, many years ago, and they are attempting to correct that as one of the homes now needs permits. And they can't get permits until they're in compliance with our subdivision regulations. So they're trying to correct that improper deed division to reflect the two lots under different ownership. Both lots share driveway access onto Blackjack Lane, which ultimately ends up on Hoffman Road and State Highway 95. So here's a picture of that plat. So this was all originally one lot in Lot 26. They both share this driveway. One home will be back here. The other one is kind of in the middle of this lot. And staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Carrie Kahler.
Aye.
Scott Long.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Cheryl Lee.
Yes.
Ismael Harris.
Yes.
Pablo Serna.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Item three E, consider action to approve replat of Lot 45 Piney Ridge subdivision, Section Three, being 6.122 acres out of Piney Ridge subdivision located at 117 and 125 Blackjack Lane within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
All right, so same subdivision, same street. Thought it sounded familiar. Yes. So this lot was platted as one and was actually improperly divided prior to initial sale of the lot. And so that is why you have two lots shown here. And then you also have one additional lot being created. The lot on the right there is being split into two so that you can get two homes there. So it corrects that initial improper deed division and also allows for one additional lot. They will also end up on Blackjack Lane and State Highway 95. All right, and here's a picture of the plat with the first half of the lot that was initially, you know, deed divided improperly. This lot on the right was the other lot that was improperly deed divided that's now being split into two. And staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Now I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Aye.
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Cheryl Lee.
Yes.
Ismael Harris.
Yes.
Pablo Serna.
Yes.
Scott Long.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item three F, hold public hearing and consider action on a recommendation for the Burleson Crossing East zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 12.95 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey from P2 rural to P5 core, and establishing a plan on 19.81 acres attached as Exhibit A, located at the northeast corner of State Highway 71 and Edward Burleson Drive within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and forwarded and forward to the April 26, 2022 City Council meeting. Ms. Bills.
Good evening. So what we're here tonight to talk about is a rezoning request that goes through our zoning concept scheme process. Property that we're talking about is right east of the existing Burleson Crossing Shopping Center. It's off of Edward Burleson Lane and then State Highway 71. We internally refer to it as the goat track because there's goats. So currently, the front third of the property is in the city limits in Zone P5, and the back two-thirds of the property is in the ETJ, but it's in a development agreement that states once the property starts to develop, it has to annex into the city limits. That was done in 2011. So that's, so with this rezoning request is also an annexation request that'll be processed alongside at City Council as this zoning moves forward. So background, the existing zoning is already place type five, our core zoning, which allows for our most intensive commercial development. Future land use plan shows this entire area as general commercial. As proposed, it's essentially a site that's anchored with one large building or buildings out at the back towards Blakely Lane with several pad sides closer up to State Highway 71. So going to walk you through a little history here. So this was, so we have been working on this with the applicant since October, November of last year. And we did, I think you all did receive a packet on this back in December at the time the applicant pulled the item so we could discuss it some more. So this is the first review we got. And you can see they've got, this is the large anchor store that's at the back. This is all turned 90 degrees to make more sense. So you've got State Highway 71 on the front here. You've got Burleson, Edward Burleson Lane here, the extension of Blakely Lane over here on the north side. And they show, well, it'll probably be two commercial buildings at the back, and then have five commercial buildings throughout the site. Where we always start on everything is obviously drainage. They also turned in a conceptual drainage plan with this that has been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. With this, you can see they've got a detention pond proposed in the development. So conceptually, their numbers work. They can plan and drain the site appropriately without flooding anyone. They can have 80% impervious cover under P5. So this is the first draft. With the code, the second thing we look at is roads, right? So we have two different grids that we talked about at our last workshop. We have our farm lot grid. It's based off of downtown. It's our 720 by 720 grid. And then internal to that, there's a 330 by 330 grid. So on this layout, this would make up a 720. So Blakely Lane, Edward Burleson, the extension of Wagon Wheel through the site, and then another road would be required here, and that makes one 720 block grid-ish. Same with here. And then internal to that, the code requires a 330 block grid. So one of the comments back from staff was to do something internal, to provide a road at the east side, and then do something internal that would provide that 330 grid as private drive aisles that met the same intents of having the walkability, the, you know, clear drive aisles and street trees. So, because we like to draw pictures in our office, not me, because I'm really bad at drawing, we, the staff, came up with this drawing that kind of, using their existing layout, was an idea that we sent back that showed using internal drive aisles that, not entirely, but that mimicked the 330 grid, provided walkability, would have parallel parking along, kind of, so kind of would look like a street, but it would still be a private drive aisle, but be walkable. It would connect all the buildings together. We worked several months with the applicant and this, they took those comments and they came back, and they've provided some additional pedestrian connectivity through, showing how they would connect the sites with some additional sidewalk and crosswalks, and then with a to-be-determined later, some kind of access point through the parking lot. So this is what's submitted in the packet as the zoning concept scheme layout for your Looking at the block grid, the farm lot block grid and the building block grid, just looking at the 720 grid, we were requiring a street. So without a public street going through, your public street network would be from Edward Burleson. You'd have Wagon Wheel. So directly to the east is the settlement development, and they have several roads, public roads that run through. Wagon Wheel does stub out directly to this property. So that's a proposed road connection that's always been there. So you, they're showing the connection to Wagon Wheel. So you're, you kind of have two big blocks. This blue block that is a 4,015-foot perimeter, and then the red block is proposed to be a 2,940-foot perimeter. With the street, that would be at approximately the 720 spacing. You would end up with a 2,590-foot perimeter and a 2,855. And the perimeter, so the 720 perimeter is 2,880 is what that perimeter comes out, maximum perimeter. And just to compare, this is the picture I showed you at the last, our last meeting. This was where we got our farm lot and building block breakdown from the original, or the map. So I've roughly scaled those two together and kind of overlaid. So that would be what the 330 grid would look like inside that farm lot. So with a road at the eastern border, we would be very close to the 720 grid. One of the things, the next step, as we go through, you know, kind of drill down through the code requirements, after you've established that everything, the drainage works, the streets, networks goes in, we look at building placement. And so this, with the applicant's building placement, we have a requirement that on the first layer, you don't have any parking. The first layer fronts onto a street, has what we call an encroachment. It's architectural relief on the front of the building, usually a canopy, an awning, gallery, something of those natures. The dark blue areas you see would be what would be considered the first layer with this building layout, and that's where all the parking would be in this proposal. What staff was, our proposal was if you put that internal 330 grid in, then you would be able to front the 330 private aisle grid, you'd be able to front onto those. So for example, that was not what I wanted to do. If you, that would be one of your 330 grids, kind of roughly there. And then the building would be fronting on that, that internal 330 private drive, and it would meet the code requirements. Our proposal was to move this building up to, to front on that. So you wouldn't, you still wouldn't get away from that. Parking's kind of, kind of be front and center in this, but you'd be coming closer to the intent of the code to meet that walkability and to meet that you're fronting the buildings with a purpose and a focal point. One of the other things we've discussed with the applicant is without meeting the 330 grid, they will be required to do a traffic impact analysis, but that comes in with the public improvement plan process. They've already done some preliminary numbers that were included in your packet that, because they're also on a text dot road, so there's going to be some requirements for improvements there. Those numbers show even with doing improvements on 71 and Edward Burleson, that some of those intersections are still going to fail at build-out. One of the things we've talked about and is in our master transportation plan is to extend Blakely Lane. And one of the things we've been discussing is, and it wouldn't connect to 71, but connecting Blakely Lane over, coming down with the street, and then connecting back to Old Austin Highway. So you'd create another route that people could get from those neighborhoods to, from the school without ever getting back on 71. That would relieve pressure on this intersection right there. Because that's, as anyone that drives through there on a Sunday or Saturday knows, you get some, you get backed up traffic going through. So like I said, a traffic impact analysis will be required, and that looks at how this, the shopping center will impact regionally, different intersections. This preliminary one shows even with some adding deceleration lanes, additional striping, changing the way it works underneath the highway, how you stack up in those turn lanes. Several of the intersections that are currently a C or D level would go to a service level F, which is the lowest rating, in a traffic impact analysis. The extension of Blakely Lane would actually help alleviate that and bring the intersection back to a C, but at this time, there's no proposal to build that connection. So in your staff report, I detailed, hopefully in a way that was understandable, a list of 28 different warrant requests that the applicants requested, many of them that they want determined at the zoning stage so that they can plan and market the entire shopping center. A lot of them, in our analysis, we've recommended that those get re-reviewed at site development or public improvement plan stages when we have more information of what those actual deviations will be and what they'll look like on the site. So I kind of grouped them by like, like code sections that impact what the layout of the shopping center will be. So the first one is the block grid requirement. They're requesting not to follow the 330 block grid or the 720 block grid requirement. And all those different code sections reflect that. The last two is if you have a major block, you have to provide a 20-foot pedestrian way through potentially as a break. What we're recommending is still provide the 720 grid and then do a 330 grid with private drives. And we feel that that would fulfill the intent, and that's would be our recommendations for those warrants, is to still require the 720 grid and then allow the 330 grid to be a private drive internal with pedestrian, and then there wouldn't be any need for a 20-foot pedestrian way. And if you have questions at any point, stop me. The second kind of list of requirements is driveways. And this is where, this is where form-based codes is, when you kind of take away one element in a way that it's formed, it affects all the other elements. Because you're, you, once you've taken kind of that primary, you need to have everything oriented towards a public street, and you're taking access of another street, it changes the way the whole code interacts with the next step. So driveways in our code, basically the summation of is we require you to take all of your driveway access off of the lesser, the less intense road. So in this case, most of that access then would be off of Wagon Wheel. Their layout shows several driveways onto Blakely Lane and Burleson Crossing, Edward Burleson Lane. So they're requesting warrants that would allow them to have driveways every 200 feet. That would allow them multiple accesses into the site. And we are open to discussing that, but once we've established where the public roads are going to be and where the buildings are going to be facing. So we are open to multiple driveways. We know these are larger, larger block slots than usual, but one every 200 feet is probably more excessive than, for just a blanket approval. Building and parking placement, so with the layout provided, all of your buildings basically back to the public roads, so you're having, you're not facing the buildings towards the public streets. So then you, we can't define what the first, second, and third layer is appropriately. So that's what the warrant request is, and it goes back to that kind of blue shaded drawing. Some other ones was max first floor, a first-floor story of a commercial building cannot exceed 25 feet from floor to ceiling. In our code, that's one of the things to make sure buildings are human scaled. Pablo probably can speak to that. And we're open to allowing taller ceiling heights. So if you go into Best Buy, those kind of stores, they have taller ceiling heights. We're open to that as long as the buildings on the exterior still resemble that human scale. So you could do that taller building and still make it resemble two stories on the outside. So staff, so some of these warrants, if you go through the list, we were in favor that they could meet the intent of the code. The starred ones are the ones that, the ones with the asterisks are the ones that we did not approve, that the applicant is asking you to approve tonight.
Just have a question about the building placement on that 6.3003A3. The building facade to be located within first 30 feet of the street. So their comment is they cannot meet because they are a retail shopping center. I've seen retail shopping centers meet that kind of scenario. Was there anything else that they provided that shows, or anything to back that up?
No, we, everything they provided for the warrants was attached.
So was there some effort to try to make that work, or was it just, we can't do that because we're a retail shopping center?
That was the answer that I understood.
Now you're saying no.
And the applicant is here, so.
Can you address that?
Sure. Yeah.
Please come to the microphone and identify yourself, please. So folks at home can hear you. Melody is the voice, and understand what you're saying.
Well, we can do that. I can do it by one answer, or I can wait and then, because you're going to ask a lot of questions.
Since you're going to start.
Steve Durman.
Okay.
I'm the owner, general partner for Burleson Crossing. Have since the start, we still own it, we will own it for a long time. So just to answer your question, Pablo, there's several buildings that we can do that on, the two up front, where we can do it for retail. Like you said, that's incorporated now. That was difficult 10 years ago, but you can get that done. What I'm speaking on, if you go in the back and we end up with a big box like a Target or Kohl's, they cannot face the street and have their parking in the back, and they can't be 30 feet away because they got to get their trucks and stuff in for that. So it's about size and placement. That's where the difference is. That's where the big issue is. So it's not just, I'm just not saying, well, we're a retail center, we don't want to do any of this. We've looked at it extensively. We've been, first meeting was in March last year, and I have a lot of, I tried to build these warrants, so coming in December, just carte blanche, P5, and then try to figure it out later. You guys really don't, your code doesn't have a vehicle. It states you can ask for a warrant, but you got to, you got to place another warrant in that meets basically the same intent of the first warrant, of the rule. Well, you've got a lot of code things for retail centers on freeways. There's no way you can meet it. And so you either do that, or you don't get the center. I mean, I understand what they're saying about the 30-30, and we have driveways that are pretty close to that, but building these wider walkways and all this stuff, our parking went from on that front, from Wagon Wheel in, it went from 400 and, I think, 75 parks to down by 170. Well, the tenants just aren't going to go for it. So, you know, if you build the eastern road as 55 feet right away, and you got a, it's a cut-through street along the back of a shopping center. That's not a good thing. And it comes out almost at the same spot as it does, that settlement drive does. And we want that, first of all, we're going to have to get text dot to let us do it there because it's closer to the lady next door, the vet, and I'm going to have to speak with her and work it out where we combine, which is something I want, I'll do. We can get as many cuts as we can get off the Forensia Road is good for traffic. But that's, that'll be one of the main entrances in the center. People drive in, you drive in. You walk, you look around, you're looking for the restaurant, you're looking for where you're going. That's not a place to have a cut-through street. Secondly, that's where the trucks are going to come in. That's why I want to build it. It's also the spot for fire, stuff like that. So it's a wider road, and there's really no walkability. I don't, I don't really want walkability. I don't know who's going to walk out there. There's ways to connect inside, and if you look at some of our exhibits, we show a lot of sidewalks, a lot of different things for connectivity. It just isn't down every road and down everything and cutting it up. It's just gotten to a point where the way this code is written, you got to do domain, and that's not what is being entertained by the tenants. As far as the scheme itself, I mean, I've never had to do this rezoning before, but we've done.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? I don't think folks at home can hear you.
But it's very, it's been very helpful doing this all up front to figure out how this thing really would work. But I've never had to do a drainage study, utility study. I mean, and you can call them schemes or studies, but they basically are your plans. You have to run all the math and figure out all the grading and everything to get there. So we've done that now. So our first phase, which is Wagon Wheel in to the deal, that's the, I provided them directly out of their leases on probably more than half the tenants that we're working with, with Letterman tenants, what their parking requirements are, how they have to face, where their trucks have to be. If I make that a city street in the back there, then we've got to pull everything forward, and we'll show that in a view. It isn't just a little bit forward. You have to now, it's a city street, not a driveway. So you can't just have the trucks come in like that. You got to have turnarounds and all. You've got to have turnarounds and the whole thing. You've got to push it forward. We lose several buildings. Or you can't have parking. Either way, you don't have tenants. So I, I, it's been a long adventure with Jennifer and Trey and Allison. I've tried to be, you know, this is something I've done for forty years, so I get a little frustrated with it, and they probably have seen that. But I'm just planning the center that I can actually get to do. And I think the biggest thing is figuring out a way to extend these roads, because what it does, we're failing right now in Edward Burleson. That was built, we built it in two thousand and eight. It's a long time ago. The traffic is incredible, as you know. Three-point-three million people use their cellphones in there every year. It's probably your five counties, it's probably the biggest place. It also drives a lot of people from out of town. There's also, I'm going to show you financial stuff on how much retail sales reimbursement there is, how many jobs, how many property tax increases, because it was not even in the city back when we bought it and did this. So with that stated, they're coming here. It's, you've got roads from every direction coming into Bassdrop, which is a very big selling point for all these retailers. That's why we got thirteen anchors in Bassdrop back in two thousand and eight through twelve. They wouldn't have come if, because you can't show it by just showing Bassdrop. Bassdrop's a small little town, when you look at it just as the town, but when you look at the area and where they'll drive from and how they can get there, it's huge. It's still a hard sell, and we will, we're competing, and it's big names, they're looking. But we need to improve, which was the plan. The plan was, was we were going to build the first three lanes, and we did that, and then we gave right-of-way for expansion. That never happened. There is a way to do it. There is a way to get Edward Burleson and get more left-turn lanes. There is a way to do some D cell lanes to get a right-turn lane in, and that's very helpful. But connecting back around to this, by the schools or actually down to Austin Highway is also major, because one of the things we did do, we haven't done what you'd call a full-blown traffic impact study, but we've done a pretty.
Excuse me, sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think you were called up to answer one question.
That's why I said, maybe I should wait, because I got a lot.
So, let's wait until we get on a little bit further, okay? Thank you. Have a seat up front. I'm sure you'll be back at the mic soon.
Thank you.
Did he answer your question?
Well, I wanted to understand where the thinking was coming from, and I wanted to hear what are the schemes they'd worked through. And, and I think you presented an option where possibly if you ran that in front of this and connecting this, I think walkability is still something we want to try to do, but I wanted to understand from your point, how, what, what you had worked through to get to that point. And you're telling me basically this is really the best we can do with what we have? I mean, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Commissioner, my name's Danny Miller with LJA Engineering, the applicant's engineer, to specifically talk about the corner, thirty-foot corner requirement. I would like, if you would think about just on the opposite corner where Lowe's is, if you were to try to put Lowe's in that situation where they have to be thirty feet from both Blakely and Ed Burleson in that back corner, they wouldn't be able to operate their store with all the loading and all the servicing that happens in the back of the store. So that, that's why we asked for this, was for those big-box retailers that need more space in that back corner.
Yeah, I think what you're telling me and I'm hearing is that you're, that backside is where the loading happens, and the store faces the, all the parking on this side of it.
Yeah, I, it's on a freeway, and if we put people on a freeway, or even Blakely, there's just, you would have to have everybody park in the back and walk around to the front, and I don't, I don't, that's not going to sell to customers, and that's not going to sell to the tenant. That's why they don't do it. There are some buildings that complement the anchors that I do want to park like that, and they, and they've learned to like that. They didn't. And we have some restaurants. Now, there is some, like the big sit-down restaurants still like to be kind of in a little center in the corner. They park heavily, so you, it's, it works better that way. But if I do a line of buildings like we have out there, where we have multiple tenants, some restaurants, some service, some retail, some medical, they think they're retailers now, the medical people. And we put them out there. I wanted to park there, because when they get out of their store, I wanted to walk over to Burlington or Cavanor Boots, or whoever's going in there. And, but, there's also a distance thing. And, so you can put too many sidewalks in, and then you lose so much parking that you now eliminated the reason to come there. It was, I mean, if you can't park, people just stop coming. I mean, you go to places and you can't get in, you just don't go. The second thing it does is people walk down, they walk through the parking lot. They come out, they see the door, they want to go for. So you can put the sidewalk down there, but then nobody walks on it. So we got to be careful about that. We ring around and we can, we can come through and try to do both. So we have walkability, but yet don't eliminate all the parking and get people situated where they can go. And then the other thing that I've got to try to do, because on Saturdays, you've been out there, it's busy, and we've got to get parking, I don't want to pay for any more parking, then, and they want me to do less, but we have to have a minimum or they won't sign a lease. But yet if I get it situated in a situation correctly, they multiple park. You know, somebody goes and eats at lunch, but then walks over and goes to their doctor appointment. And so you, and that's what we're trying to do.
I've got a question real quick. And you brought up the domain earlier, and I've been to the domain and the Hill Country Galleria, and they are operating on that walkability principle, where you do park and you walk. And I, and I just want to understand, was that never on consideration?
No, that's, I'm not saying we're not having that. That's one, exactly what I'm saying, is that we can park in certain areas. The, the type of tenants we're going to have, where you walk around like you do domain and then have parking garages, and that's not what this retail center is going to be. You cannot get those in Bassdrop right now. It isn't, I mean, you're not going to get Nordstroms to come out here. There's only one in Austin. It took them twenty years. It's in the most dense part of the city, dense part of probably ten, ten counties. So that's the other play. I mean, I'm just saying, Target or Kohl's, or if we do a whatever entertainment in the back, we want them to walk, but you also got to be realistic. They're driving here from many miles, and you walk out of Lowe's and you've got lumber, you're not going over to Best Buy to buy a TV and walk over there. That's, that's what we get, is the type of stuff they sell, that's the difference. Whereas you'd walk around to Main, they're shopping. It's like Main Street, which is what's, and that's the tenants, and the restaurants and the different things there. It's nice. I don't like to have to park on the fourth level all the time, but I live right by it. But it's different, and I, that's what, that's what's different. We're a freeway suburban shopping center, and that's what Bassdrop is. And that's the type of tenants. Now, if you don't want that, then, and you want to wait, you got to wait, because they're not coming right now, and that's the difference. So you, that's what we're looking at. So it just, you might get some of the restaurant people to walk over there and back, but you're not going to get somebody coming out of Specs with a case of beer and then going over to Best Buy to get a TV and walk back to the car or buy Lowe's. It just, it, it's not realistic in a hundred-degree weather. So what we try to do is have the internal drives to keep them off the main drives if they do move, and try to have walkability from things like the restaurants and things like that. The other thing is, I cannot convince, H, I'm an HEB developer. I helped you guys do the HEB back then. My first development here was expanding HEB in Bassdrop in two thousand, I guess it was two thousand and three. And HEB tried. We built some where we had, where you walk out and you went undercover sidewalks, down and down, and that was the worst fiasco they'd ever done. They did five stores that way, because people didn't want to do that. They wanted to drive. Soon as they got in the car, they wanted to leave, and you couldn't. You had to go around the sidewalks, and they couldn't figure out any way to do it. So it's been tried, but in suburban markets, it has not worked. In a urban setting.
That was in two thousand and three, you said?
Yes, when we expanded the grocery store.
That's when you put that in?
Yeah.
It's nineteen years later, and with the development that we're seeing here, more and more folks are coming, so I have to believe that folks are going to be driving not as far as they drive to come now, because they're going to be living here. And the codes that we've got, and it looks like that the planning department has, is okay with a lot of the warrants that you want, are at least willing to consider them. I think before they can say yea or nay, we need to know where the placements are going to be for the buildings. You still don't know what's, what tenants are going to be where, do you?
Ma'am?
Or do you?
Ma'am, I have a pretty very good idea, but I'm not going to displace you.
Okay.
And, and that is, if it's one building that's a hundred thousand feet, two different tenants, it's, it's the same, but they are looking. And I, the problem is, is I can't go to them and say, I think I can get this. They won't come. Bassdrop's on their list, but it's not top on the list, and they're doing thirty stores when they can do three-hundreds in the country. So you go in and say, I think this is what we're going to build, and I need to know that, or that's the reason why I still develop. Otherwise, they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't go with me. And I get some of the stuff, but some of the items, there's no way to kind of, well, if we get this, we get that. You know, like in the back, they talked about the eastern road, let's go to, all right, leave you at thirty feet so you don't have to push your building up and to pond up and lose buildings, but make the drives twenty-two feet so you can put a sidewalk in. That's a semi's coming down there. You know, I, it's not, I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to figure out your code and stay with your code, but that's not reality when, if we're doing this type of center.
And everything you've talked about tonight has been considered by the planning department? Are you bringing in any new information?
No, I'm going to bring in financial information, because they requested that. But no, we've worked through this for months, and we have a warrant list, and there's only really, well, they can't approve anything. That's the problem. So they have to deny, I know that they're on the side on some of the stuff, and probably on this, on some of the more, a few more items, and they want to wait on some of the stuff, but some of the stuff is interrelated, and I really would like to get it approved by you all now so I don't have to come back again. And, but, yeah, I mean, we're, I don't, they know what I want, or have to have, and I know what they want, and our biggest thing is probably parking in the back versus parking in the front, and how you face the buildings. And they're probably, the eastern drive, I don't want it to be a city street. I just, it doesn't make sense. The difference is, okay, you guys buy it, you build it, it's a million-to-five.
Commissioner Kaler has a question.
I've got a question or two for Ms. Bills. When we were looking at adopting the new B3 code, what was the consideration process with reconfiguring these centers' block code for things like deliveries? Where it, in the, in the concept that, that staff did the overlay for, where would delivery, where would the delivery points be?
The overlay?
The, the blue page where you, where you showed that kind of overlay? I just want to get a sense of.
So where they're showing deliveries would be the back area there, and then over on the back of that building.
And, and was there thought, was there consideration put into where those access points would be with, when we reconfigured the code?
Not specifically, no.
Okay. And this design, you all started working on this design after the code was adopted?
Yes.
And are the, has the city and the applicant been, have, is the applicant aware of which warrants y'all are able to work with them on and which ones you are not?
Yes, and the attachment, I can't remember which page, big spreadsheet. They had their request, they had our analysis, and then their response to our analysis. And so we, in there specified whether or not it was denied at this time to be, you know, considered during public improvement plan phase or site development. And there were several in there that we kind of partially approved or approved based off of how, how, you know, the, in, the road layout ended up, so.
Well, my thinking on this is that, you know, part of partnering with the community is creating a, of sustainable commercial ecology, if you will. And I understand that that's difficult for these kind of plug-and-play design concepts, you know, that, that you see all over, like the Lowe's or whatever. This code is not as conducive to that. However, to me, it seems like it would be more conducive if tenants come and go, as we know that they do, that this is more easily reconfigured for whomever might come in and out of that space. Is that, would you say that that's a fair?
Yes, and, and again, like where we say we start is with the roads, because that's the part that the city gets a chance at every fifty to a hundred years. Once the road's there, things are fairly set, so. And then sites inside can be redeveloped over time.
I, I know, you and I've talked about this, and, and we, I've mentioned it the last meeting. My concern, I think this is great. I want more sales tax dollars, I want more shopping, I want to build Bassdrop's commercial district. My concern is a scenario that you see in sprawl areas across the country where you have these retail locations for big-box stores like Kmart, and then Kmart goes by the wayside, and then you have an empty building. And that empty building is really difficult to reconfigure for a new tenant, and then we get stuck with, you know, a center that is failing because it's hard to move someone else in and out. So I think a lot of consideration went into this code, and I, I recognize and appreciate the challenge of that, but I, you all didn't start developing this until the code was completed, and I don't see a reason that we should be considering broadly approving a concept plan that doesn't fit with our code.
Can I speak to your Kmart point and this change point?
Sure.
Kmart's now just going out of business, and they've been around, but they were around fifty years. And every Kmart that shut down probably in this country's been reconfigured and done, because if you own it, you got to fill it. I'm not going to speak to them, that's, that's one example. We have, we've had thirteen junior anchors in anchors for, since two thousand and eight through about twelve, and the only one that we changed was Staples. And we changed Staples because they basically had lied to us when they came in. They, they said they were going to expand Texas and become a big presence here, and then they got bought by outside firm, and they stopped Texas. So they were down just a few locations, and we just didn't, we saw the chance for Old Navy, and so we did. And as far as Kmart and Sears, those, what really took them down was debt. They were multiple times sold, leveraged buyouts, and that's really where the issue is on, on the buildings. But we signed long-term deals, and we have not sold it, so when you say that we're, that scares me. And as far as this code, we started bringing dirt in on that site in two thousand when Buc-E's was built, knowing that we were going to do this. And the economy was at such where the boxes, there hasn't been anchors for a long time. They had to kind of figure out the internet and how they worked with Amazon and all that, and now you see, they actually are the ones winning. They're the ones that are strongest, stronger than Amazon. Amazon's adding stores, lots of them. So people like to go shop. It's not anything that we do that is special, but people do like it. It draws a lot of people, and yes, you're.
And yes, you're going to get more congested in Bassdrop, and it's going to grow. But the way your road structures are, and the way the cities are around here, they're not going to be big enough. You're going to continue to get Bassdrop, people from Bassdrop from a long ways. And we feel strongly about that. That's why we haven't sold our center. And I would, you know, if you want to see some more, we basically did exhibits to kind of explain why we did everything the way we did it. That's in your packet, but we haven't seen those on the screen. But you may want to look at those, or I can explain it to you. But it just shows the realities of your code. If you do this, what happens? And it's, you know, with, it's a nineteen-acre site. And just doing the Wagon Wheel Road and the Blakie Extension and the Eastern Road, if you get it, and then they require three point nine or three point eight acres of parks or bus stops or something. It's almost nine acres. It's just under. So nine acres out of nineteen acres, there's no way to build anything, not in suburban America. And I understand, we want it to look nice. We did it. We want to do it exactly like it's across the street, which was something that was worked on for two years back in two thousand and seven, to come up with a development code for that property, using the look of downtown, the different building looks. If you go out there, we have, every building is different. They have stone on them, or brick, or different looks and different shapes. It took a long time to develop it. So we're not opposed to trying to meet and fit what the look is. It's just that, you know, an Olive Garden needs a, you know, a hundred and twenty parks. And if you say, you can only give them seventy, they just don't come. Or if you say, you know, you've got to walk over there, they'll do it for a distance.
Hang on, Commissioner Lee?
I'm just, I'm more of a visual person, so I really would like for, I know you said you stood up to talk about the financials, but I really want to see your vision. So I would like, if you could, to put up the staff's recommendation map, so that you can point out what the problems are that you're seeing with their recommendations. Because you're saying that you're willing to meet, but all I see is not meeting intent, not meeting intent. So I want to...
Let her finish, please.
No, I just want to better understand, what is it that you are willing to accommodate to meet our codes versus the, all of the warrants that are not meeting the code?
Well...
So if you can show us either your, either the map with your idea, or show us the map and point out the, where you think that the staff's recommendation is just not going to work. Does that make sense?
We loaded up eleven, ten exhibits with colors and site plans. Okay. And I guess you're going to have to look at the packet.
The picture that I'm seeing in my packet are individual pictures. And Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong on this. What Cheryl wants, or what I'd like to see, is I want to see the whole pic, the big picture. I want to see the big picture. I don't want to see pictures of just some buildings. I want to see exactly what the developer's talking about, because when, the blue overlay made a lot of sense to me. I mean, I understand, and a lot of this makes sense. And I don't think we're going to have one perfect solution, because I don't think we want just the domain here in Bassdrop. I personally don't. So I would like to see a big picture, is what I'd love to see.
Well, if you look at this one right here, this is a showing to try to explain the road grid, what's different. And do you have that in your packet? Yes. Okay. If you look at it, our, what we're saying here is, the road grid itself is not the issue. You see that we're talking about building the same type of, almost the same type of road grid. In fact, we will, when we know further about back over here, we will be, there'll be a drive coming through here, too. I mean, it'll be the same. The difference is, what they show in your code shows, these have to be fifty-five feet wide. And they've got to have sidewalks down both of them. They've got to have trees. They've got to have, and so you're, basically, all these rows of parking that you see next to the pink are gone. And you start eliminating it to the point where you can't build the buildings based on parking, which is not me saying that. That's the retailer saying that. These are, these people that I'm showing here are actually negotiating leases. The people in here, we have tenants who want to go in, that I should be working on. This is a restaurant. There's, Darden, Darden's looking at two or three of their concepts. Back here, these are some big boxes you typically put in the back, and they face. There's two or three that have been looking. We haven't really pressed that, because I was just trying, we've got to work out a lot of stuff first, and they, they need certainty. And that's why I think our biggest issue is, when I say that we're working towards what your block is, we are. It makes sense to have this kind of stuff. It's just, it's how it's presented. And there's ways, you can see, the green is our sidewalks. There's walkability all throughout. It's connected. It goes around the buildings. It connects to all the different buildings. I'm not saying that we're against that, but you guys got a sidewalk on every street on both sides, on every driveway or alley, and it's, it's a lot. It takes a lot of room, and it eliminates other things. And is it necessary? That's the, that's why when we say that in the warrants, I don't know how to fix that. I don't know to make something like. So what I'm saying, I'm not, you know, we never argued about this kind of layout. We argued about the semantics of how those roads are situated, and what they do, what are the implications if you do build it like this? And what it does is, it basically makes it infeasible. You've got to take about half the retailers out.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but on what you're holding there, then the green is the walkability, because that's the sidewalks. And that totally makes sense to me. And so, over here, we've met what the intent is. Over here, we've done as good as, well, your plan...
I have the note. I don't know where the drive's going to be.
Right, right.
See, this building could go here, and maybe we end up with a building over here.
Uh huh, okay.
And, and so we do it a little differently, depending on the size. If it's a Kohl's or a Target. You know, or I put it in entertainment, maybe it's a theater.
Well, just to me, that makes total sense.
And then, we will then come in and add sidewalk. And I have no problem with that. We're not arguing about that. We're arguing about, actually, we're probably down to the Eastern Road on most of it. And my problem with that, that's the next thing. If you look at the Eastern Road, this is a diagram I want you to look at. And this is just an example. This road, this is a drive, it's thirty, thirty foot wide. It's set up for deliveries and to get people in to Wagon Wheel and all this stuff, off the Frontage Road and connect. Because you don't want them driving back there. All they're doing is going back to the Frontage Road, and then they're just in it, in it again. But I also don't want them screaming down here at fifty-five miles an hour, cutting through in the evenings, because your growth is out nine-six-nine. It's down twenty, like your proven plans today. And that nine-six-nine, we found when we did the study, was already about thirty percent of the traffic back there on Blakie. So if we can find a way to get them over to Austin Highway without going onto the Frontage Road and through Edward Burleson, it'll be a big thing.
The Frontage Road right now, even the way it is without this, can be a nightmare. So I agree with you a hundred percent on that. That has to be done.
But here's the deal. So if you go, if you look at everything in black, that's what I'm proposing. And then if you look at the red, what happens is, this building, when you go to that wide of a street, it comes to city street, this moves up. And then you have a truck turner, that's not there anymore. The back of the store is right there where the red is. And then that all pushes forward. And then you got, you got to make this a parking field. And that building goes away, and this building goes, partial of this building goes away. That's, that's what happens. And that's, that's what we're, it's not the intent of your code that we're trying to get at. We're basically trying to say, some of it is, is too much. It's just, it's so much, it's killing what you're trying to do.
So the way I kind of look at it, I'm not sure about everyone else. Like, as much as we would like for whoever to come in and contribute to the city, like, the area is also going to contribute greatly to whoever comes in, right? But we also have to look out for our community and take care of the needs of our community before we just up and decide, well, we're going to exclude this and exclude that just for the benefit of everyone else.
I'm very much with you. My initial response coming in was to come in with a PUD. And so, because these are warrants. Once you do these, if you do them, then the next person can come in and ask for the same situation. I don't think they will, because this is a large shopping center on the freeway, but, you know, it is what it is. And you're right. But that's what, that's what staff wanted, because we tried. But I didn't understand why we couldn't do a PUD. They said it's something historical, but I haven't found that. Or we could have just used a development code that we had on a PUD, and then added a bunch of things that we like, like putting, like Pablo, like putting the buildings up in the front, like that, close to the road and facing them back, and adding some more walkability, doing some of those things. I don't think we're really arguing. And I never usually do the landscape plan for a zoning case, but we did. We got a few things. We got to work out with trees and sizes, and it's thirty feet, maybe we clump them together, and we've all kind of agreed that's a good thing. And, but, this is where we're at. And I have a warrant list, and there are certain things that they want to wait till later, and I just, I don't have enough certainty. We've tried to pick out the ones we had to have, if I'm going to go finalize this stuff and move forward. And it's a very difficult climate right now, you know, to do all this. It's very expensive. We have supply chain issues, and we're very worried about what might happen in the next two years with the economy. But I went through it last time. We signed it in two thousand and seven, and in two thousand and eight, I went and never got a loan. We never had a shopping center. So you do what you do. We fought through it.
Could I ask Jennifer a couple of questions? Jennifer, in our workshop, we brought, or one of the future amendments is the State Highway Seventy-One corridor alternative development standards. Is that in relation to anything we're talking about with these problems that are coming up?
Yeah, that's something that we'll be looking at, is probably developing some alternative standards. But that's part of the problem, that's part of why we're, want to have that discussion, is because it's a form-based code. When you pull out one piece of the form, it makes kind of all the other pieces fall apart, you know? It's, they all build on each other. So we're wanting to look at a way to have that you either do the form-based code, or you use a different standard, that possibly then we have to now start looking at uses again. Oh, okay, this, it's P five, and you don't, you want to do this development, so you're only going to be allowed to do retail. There's no multifamily. You're not going to be allowed these certain uses, and that's what we're looking at.
Right. And that makes sense, and I totally understand what you're saying. And my other question was, there was, just to explain to me, does the development agreement not affect this that they had many, many years ago?
So what he's referring to is the cross on Burleson Crossing. It was an economic development agreement. It's called a Chapter Three Eighty Agreement. It's allowed by the state. And they embedded in their development standards in there that actually didn't come through P and Z. It's not in their zoning document. It was a contractual economic development document that probably wasn't the entirely correct route to go. It wasn't a zoning decision.
But that agreement, like, I'm just thinking back on the movie set that's coming in, and we read extensively the development agreement that was with the city. So are we not talking about the same thing?
There are different mechanisms, so.
Sir, you've had a lot of time to speak. Let us, let the, I just want to make sure that the commissioner's questions are asked and answered by staff. Are there any other, Pablo?
I was going to say, should we go ahead and let Jennifer finish? I have some questions about the parking, but I can wait.
Yes. I think that's an excellent idea, and we still do have to open a public.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've gone over a lot of the building and parking placement, you know, question, warrant requests. A lot of how to do out with placement to the road, where the parking's located, and then what the buildings actually look like on the outside. One of the other ones is civic space. So in rezoning, so we have actually percentages that are required when you're looking at a pedestrian shed, that you're supposed to have a certain allotment of percentages. We do agree that since the surrounding area is already P five, that P five is appropriate to do the majority, the whole site is P five. However, we're recommending ten percent of that should be civic space, which is one point nine acres. We're recommending doing that as, on the site development plan, as private but open space. So still, like a green, or walking trails, or bus stops, different elements that could count as that civic space inside the site, but not publicly dedicated. Some of the other ones, you had to do with the trees, what size they had to be, and where their spacing, and those are ones staff agreed we could look at during the site plan, that we already allow two-inch trees if there are a certain, at a certain level of maturity. And that, as long as there was one, every thirty feet, we could vary the spacing. So director analysis, this is the high, kind of high-level analysis, trying not to get super into the weeds of each warrant, but you should have a chance. Your packet has all the detail in there. That the Eastern Drive aisle should be a publicly dedicated street that makes the seven-twenty grid internal to the farm lots at seven-twenty grid. There should be a three-thirty grid that is mimicking the street grid that provides, you know, a clear drive aisle with pedestrian elements and street trees internal to the site. That was the example we kind of provided. It doesn't have to be exactly like that, but that was giving you an idea. And that doesn't change the layout of the buildings. More about, you know, that the three-thirty grid isn't provided in there. They've discussed the extension of Blakie Lane, but that's not part of their proposal. That's something the city would still be responsible for, or future developments would be responsible for. The buildings aren't in this layout oriented towards a public street, and do not meet the lot occupation standards, which that's, what percentage of the street frontage that the building takes up. Our recommendation for that is that, using the three-thirty private grid internal, there's opportunity to use those as the frontage for the buildings, using the civic space, doing that internal to the site as private open space within their site plan. And then the landscape plan, there were some differences we called out on the landscape hand, just that they needed to make sure the street trees are provided on public streets. So staff's recommendations, but hold the public here in a second, but to provide the seven-twenty-foot farm lot grid, that's with the Eastern Road, the three-thirty grid could be private drive aisles that meet the same intent, that we need to identify the first layer, how it relates to the seven-twenty or the three-thirty internal block grid. The civic space, one point nine acres, provided as private. And then that the other warrant requests would come back during additional phases. And again, they're always appealable to P and Z as the appeal body for those. Any questions? And going back to, when we did this code, just real quick, remember that, that we had a lot of discussion, is if you didn't want to follow the code, the process was to come to P and Z and city council and propose what you're doing, show how it meets or is better than the code, and then P and Z and city council can decide if the doing different is worth, worth, you know, is it providing those three, big three goals? Is it meeting our fiscal and sustainability for the city as a whole? Is it geographically sensitive? In this case, there's no geographic sensitive reason. And is it authentic to Bassdrop? So those are the three. And then it's kind of, it's up to P and Z to recommend and city council to decide. So that was the process envisioned, is that we did, yes, we had a strict code. We got a lot of feedback on it. If you want to do something different, propose what you want to do, and then that's up to P and Z and city council to debate, so.
Okay, so with the proposed street between their location and the vet, right, is that going to be a one-way or two-way? Is that gonna be a one-way or two-way proposed street?
The Eastern Street?
Yes.
It would be a, the full, full street, full fifty-five foot right of way, and it would be a, probably, it, we have multiple cross-sections that could.
Okay, so, just thinking about it, um, like, as already mentioned, how much traffic is right there? Everyone who's around knows, it's kinda gets jammed up right there. Um, I'm not sure if a two-way would be the best thing on that side. Maybe a one-way going in, you know, to alleviate a lot of the traffic right there, but just, I, I don't know, that's just a thought, you know? I mean, I, I would be in agreeance with the, the street, and, you know, just the thought of the width that he's looking at, I mean, I don't know, it's just.
Yeah, it's, it, one, one-way streets generally aren't preferable. They have other issues that they bring. But, in this case, when we talk about, you know, how the traffic moves, part of the, the reason for the grid, and we, we like to use the grocery store analogy, when you have just the two checkers open, obviously everyone stacks up with those two checkers. When you have all ten, everyone self, you know, self-regulates themselves into different paths. And so, that's the, the idea of providing the grid at least at an every seven-twenty, is that every seven hundred and twenty feet, you have a chance to turn and make a different direction to get to the same place. So, in this case, if you're trying to get back to, um, Blakely Lane, instead of having to get to Edward Burleson, take a right and get back there, now you would take a right earlier, and you'd miss that intersection altogether. So, that's the idea behind, and then, chances are, people probably wouldn't come back down that way, 'cause then they'd end up in a circle back too. Since the frontage road is one-way, um, it would be people coming out of the shopping center, that would be.
I'm just thinking also, too, to discourage people from, 'cause all you're gonna do is just create a, another jam on that east side, potentially. People, right, or just, I mean, people would go through and go around, but right, if they're gonna, whatever, just coming headed south, I just, just, just increases the, the traffic on that side. That's just what I'm thinking.
Typically, I'd imagine people coming south out of that driveway would be coming from the shopping center and, or settlement, uh, not the other, um, not coming back from the west and going back down. So, yeah.
Commissioner Long, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Okay. Commissioner Serna?
I, I did, did you? Okay. Well, I know we, I brought up a couple of examples, and what I hear you saying is, yeah, we're not there yet, and, and I understand it, but I looked real quickly, and it's just nothing scientific. There's a lot of more examples that are Walmart, you know, there's a lot of examples of what's called new urbanism design, which is what this code is based on, which is a walkability model. It's, but it is a new way of thinking, and I think that it involves a way of thinking about parking. It's not auto-centric. I think that was one of the things when we were developing B-three code. The first thing I brought up to Matt was, where are we gonna park everybody? And he said, you know, he, he went over about how parking and, and i- if we build around parking, which, I, you mentioned parking a lot, and I looked at your parking requirements, and yet, are you exceeding the parking that's required? It sounds, it seemed like what you provided was based on what was required. Maybe you're a little bit higher, but it did seem to me that this is an auto-centric design, and what we're telling the people of Bastrop, if we vote for this and say, yeah, let's give it to them, we're basically saying we're not gonna change anything that we're trying to do. And B-three code was to try to change the game for us. And I know we're not there yet, we're not asking for the domain. I mean, but what we are asking for is walkability and show some good faith effort in that. And I don't see it, I don't see, I mean, it's, this is the lowest bar right here, and you said it yourself. That's where we're at. So, we're gonna give what you've always given us, and we're not gonna give the city, the people of Bastrop, anything more. And I wanna see some better thinking, some better ideas, and it starts with whoever's designed this. And I don't, I don't see it, but this is everything that you've given us. Basically, we're just rehashing the same thing. You put it, it's a, it's a plug-and-play. And this plug-and-play will not work with our B-three codes exactly. That's why we put the B-three code together, because we wanted to get something better. And, if it's just a matter of, well, we don't wanna scare people off from developing, I guess that's where, where we are at. And, and having gone through the B-three codes at the beginning, I've got, I've, I was convinced that that's kinda the way of the future, and Bastrop can be different. It can be.
I definitely don't see this. I respect your opinion, Pablo, but I don't see this as the lowest bar at all. In fact, I see a lot of works gone in from the city and the developer to come up with, I'm looking at a plan that looks like there's a lot of walkability in the areas that make sense. Now, I do understand what you're saying about the B-three codes. And that is for the City Council to decide that maybe the B-three codes are not gonna work in all applications, and I think that's why we're gonna look at the seventy-one corridor, 'cause we kinda realize that. So, we can't do one-size-fits-all, especially when it comes to serving the citizens of Bastrop and bringing tax dollars in. I look at this as trying to work on both sides and coming up with a pretty good plan, but that's just the way I see it.
I, I can, I kinda concur. With, and looking at this map here, where the majority of the stores, it looks like, will be congested, me being a shopper, I, I would walk that pedestrian there, five-minute walk to any of these stores, right? To get, I would not walk from here to over here. I don't think most people would. I think most people would get in their car and drive over here. I do that now, where the Home Depot is. I would not walk from Best Buy over to Specs. I would get in my car and I would drive over there. So, I get this, and I think that it does meet, um, our codes in terms of the blockage and the three-thirty, and I see why these sidewalks make sense here. I'm not sold on why we need that on this side. And I'm still confused about the parking in the back that's been mentioned here. This is, let's, I'm just making up a story. Let's say Best Buy and Target was here. This is the back, right? Where the loading is, so there wouldn't be any parking in the back. Why is that continuing to be, why is that continuing to be an issue, as being said, as if the city's trying to make them put parking in the back?
That, our code, that's what the code requires, is to put the parking in the back, but what staff is recommending, that as long as they meet the internal three-thirty grid with the walkability, with the dedicated sidewalks and street trees, that we are, uh, we are favorable of the plan.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Makes sense. So, I kinda feel like the domain is not a good comparison. I know it's just an example, but, um, I, I live in the domain, so I know what you're talking about. Um, there, something like that, to me, is a different, a whole different type of development. Like, there are two differently, different types, you, you can't compare the two. They're just different concepts. Um, I personally would love to see a domain here, but I don't think that that fits into what's trying to happen here. So, I, I'm kind of like in between. I feel like there's so many warrants, for, I would not feel comfortable just doing a blanket approval with this many warrants on the table. I feel, kinda feel like, um, I need a better understanding of how the developer, to Carrie's point, this was developed after the B-three codes was, were created, so why wasn't it kind of trying to meet the intent in the development instead of just saying, well, this is not gonna work for what we're trying to do? And, by, I don't know if these sidewalks were then considered after the fact, or that was part of your original concept, these sidewalks? But I, I do feel like there needs to be a balance. We, we under, I understand that this is a different puppy, and it needs to be looked at a little bit differently, but I also understand that we can't just approve fifty warrants and say, okay, do as you will. I feel like I need more clarity to go there.
Thank you. Shall we go forward and open the public hearing now? After which, we can come back, have more discussion, and decide on a recommendation. Are we okay with that? Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will open a public hearing to consider action on a recommendation for Burleson Crossing East zoning concept scheme, changing zoning from twelve point nine-five acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey from P-two rural to P-five core, and establishing a plan, nineteen point eight-one acres attached to Exhibit A, located at the northeast corner of State Highway Seventy-One, and Edward Burleson Drive within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, for the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two City Council meeting. Public hearing is now open. Have we received any requests to speak?
Not at this time.
Have you filled out a request to speak?
I did for the next item, you didn't, but I want you to speak to this.
Could, could you fill out one for that?
Debbie, may I ask you a question while this is going on? If I have a question for the developers, should I do that after we close the public hearing?
After you want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The normal requi, requirement is that you fill it out before we start, but we'll make an exception this time.
I didn't come to speak on this item, so, but I just was taking some notes off, from the discussion.
Identify yourself, please, for the record.
I'm sorry, Becky Wumble, Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, nine-two-seven Main Street. I wrote down in my notes, just listening to the conversation and everything, and one of the things that I wrote down first, and it's something Ms. Myers just said, was one-size does not fit all. And I feel like the B-three code does not fit our historic downtown and our charming homes like it fits our seventy-one development, and I think that's where the clash is happening. I've heard, if I've heard it once, I've heard it a thousand times. There's not enough parking in downtown. And if somebody can't park in front of the business that they wanna shop at, they're not gonna shop there. So, here we are, denying parking that could be for a huge box store that would generate a whole lot of sales tax, uh, revenue. I think we have a chance to do this right. If you listen to the B E D C meeting a few weeks ago, and Retail Coach made a presentation, I think there's a hundred and ninety-one square miles that we, um, generate business from and generate sales tax. We, we're very unique. When, when I talk to somebody about us being a town of ten thousand, and we have a three-million-dollar hotel occupancy tax, or that we have the sales tax revenue that we have, and we have a town of ten thousand, that's incredible. People come from all over the place. They were talking about how they can't, they have a hard time explaining how unique our situation is here, and how far people come. I can't tell you how often I can be at TJ Maxx or something, and I see someone, one of my friends from Lockhart, or somebody I know from Sam Markes. They come here because they don't wanna go to Austin. I wanna say that I feel like, and I mean, just from my short time here, the Burleson Crossing developer has been a good community partner, and I think we have a good shopping center that's well-maintained. I mean, other than the Staples leaving and then Old Navy coming in, that was a strategic business decision. So, I don't even, I don't even think that's like an open space that we can, um, you know, say that there was an open space or something that went, went vacant. Parking, people need parking to be successful in retail, period. They need it. And then the last thing is, when it comes to the B-three code, I'm gonna tell you what I've heard a hundred times now, is people saw a lot of pretty pictures in those code rodeos, but they did not understand the ramifications of what the B-three code is doing to our community. I honestly think there needs to be a code for downtown in our historical ta, um, district, and our historic charming homes, and there needs to be a different code for development and commercial development along seventy-one.
Let me just ask you one quick question. What would you replace it with?
I don't know, I would, I mean, um, maybe.
I'm asking the speaker, please.
I, I don't know, I mean, but I think we need to do something, because there's just so much, um, clashing between what we're trying to do and how we're trying to keep the downtown charm, and then what we're trying to do on seventy-one. I mean, I've told people a hundred times that you haven't seen real Bastrop until you come across that bridge, if you've just gone down seventy-one. And so, I don't know, I mean, I don't know an answer to that, but there needs to be something, a different overlay for that area of town.
So, may I ask a question of Becky, please? So, Becky, perhaps we replace it what the development agreement was with Burleson Crossing, a plan like that, that works, something like that. That, that's just my thought.
Yep.
We're not here to talk.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that, I just, like, if I didn't come for this item, I was coming for the next item, but just taking some notes, and when you said one-size does not fit all, that was the first thing I wrote down, as far as just thoughts about the discussion.
Thank you.
Pablo, do you have a question?
Uh, well, just a comment, really.
Go ahead, ahead.
It's in line with this thinking and the, the one-size-fits-all. Uh, one of the hallmarks of the B-three code is exactly that it does not have. We have lots of varying sizes, businesses that are on small footprints and large footprints. So, if you look at the B-three code, it's there. We can do a lot of things. What the B-three code really is, is geared towards walkability. And I think that what we're looking for, one of the things we're looking for, 'cause this is on this side of the river, you just said it. People come to Bastrop, they're, and I know they go to Burleson Crossing, 'cause I go there a lot, but they're looking at the old Texas charm, the small, the town. Uh, Bastrop does it better than a lot of towns around here, and we're really trying to protect that. So, we base the B-three code on this, this model, and we're trying to expand that. And you, and, and I think, I'm saying this, but people need to go and look. It's being done in other towns, McKinney, Texas, uh, Richardson, I can think of a couple of, and Dallas area, Houston. So, this idea of creating these walkable, uh, retail centers, that's not the gallery or the, or the domain, those are the higher-end ones, but they're even being done on smaller scales. And so, I think it's there, it's just, uh, it is different, and I think that's, going back to my point, this is pretty much the same.
Thank you. If there's no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I think the speaker made a really great point about there being a, a difference between the Bastrop across the bridge and the Bastrop before the bridge. And I'd like to see, I'd like people who are going on the highway to be able to see a glimpse of that Bastrop beyond the bridge, because I think it would bring people across the bridge into town. I know a lot of people who, when I tell them that I'm living Bastrop, they go, oh, Bastrop! I've never gotten off the highway. And, and I think a part of that reason i- is, I think a part of the, the potential here is to create an aesthetic that makes people wanna get off the highway, and I think that that's the opportunity that we have with this code, and I don't see that it's been truly tested yet. I, I've heard a lot of comments about how this doesn't work, but I'm, have we had a development that actually has come in and done this yet? I, I don't think so.
Not of this magnitude.
So, so, I mean, I, I, I don't know that we can say that this doesn't work when, when we, we haven't even had a chance to try it, so, that's.
It's very different.
So, I hear a lot of, we want it to be, just like downtown, we wanna carry that vibe and that whole feeling. And then there's, well, there's developers who obviously wanna do things another way. I understand wanting to carry on that, you know, make it exactly like it, but there are sometimes issues that come up, like eighteen-wheelers getting in and out of a business, or having adequate parking to be able to actually attract a retailer that wants to come in that, you know, viably can use that space, that have to be considered. I think, overall, and like Jennifer mentioned earlier, when somebody wants to go against B-three code, that's what they come here for, and that's what they, you know, ultimately would go to City Council for. I think finding that compromise between the two sometimes is kinda what we're supposed to be doing. So, to see a plan that has a little more compromise instead of three pages worth of Excel spreadsheet on what they wanna change would be better before it comes here, if that can be, I don't know, worked out prior to, you know, having a laundry list of things that don't match up, if there's a way to, you know, have a compromise, more of a compromise coming in.
I think that's the point that Commissioner Lee was making, that we're being asked to approve a whole bunch of warrants, that, um, I would not feel comfortable approving everything. Maybe what we need to tell them to do is go back and work harder. Because some of the warrants are going, you're asking for after we get more information. We can't, we don't have that information now. And we, we want the development, but, right, right there, that's a whole lot of parking. And, I think we can do better. I think we can do some more walkability. I think. I think, may not walk from one side to the other, but that little place down there, if you got a sidewalk, you might walk from there, I don't know. Maybe not in August, but right now I would walk it. But there are a lot of things that are not decided yet. I think you'll agree that you've gotten some warrants and some nods. And you've had a lot of time to speak, so give us a time, please. So I think that, I would like it to them to go back and work, do some more working. Cheryl?
And to add on to that, I mean, I appreciate you guys showing us your vision. I do, again, need a clarity. I, to Debbie's point, I don't, we don't, like, let's say that's a Papadoz. We don't know what restaurant's going there, but a Papadoz will take up all that parking space. But that's where we don't know. We don't know what would take up all, what's going in there for us to be able to determine, yeah, we should waive this. Because I could easily see a popular restaurant using all of that parking space, and I don't want to take your parking space, but I still don't, I also don't have a clear vision of where you're wanting to put the streets, or is it just the streets are just too wide? Are you just not wanting the streets to be as wide as they're asking? The streets that are on this pink here, are you wanting one or two of those removed? That's where I'm needing a little bit more clarity. And then on the opposite side, I feel like we don't have enough to make any decisions. What are you going to do with the opposite side? I feel like this side might be meeting our code, with the exception of, I'm not real sure on what you're wanting to do with the streets there, because you're saying it's going to take up your parking spots. But then this side here, what is your suggestion in terms of meeting that 330 grid?
And I think what we'd like to do is have the developer and our planning department go back, come back to us with some more, more definite of what can, what we would agree to and they would agree to.
And one more thing. And I also understand the catch-22 of, you can't come to us and say, "Well, I've got this business lined up, this business and this business," because you can't line those businesses up until you can have them say, "Well, yeah, that's the parking we would like, that's this and that." So you're in a position right now where you can't guarantee somebody can come in and say, "We're going to put, you know, Olive Garden right here," because they don't know the parking situation, they don't know anything yet, so they, they're not going to commit.
We're not saying it's going to be easy, but I think you've worked hard already, and I'm confident that if you go back and work together some more, you can come up with something we can vote on.
Yeah, I, I agree with him that, that, you know, I could get comfortable if, you know, if we had a more specific tailored reason. I mean, we did that with the bank, where there were some technicalities to the flow of the property that were specific to that property, and we were able to work with that and provide the developer some relief. And I think, I don't want to speak for my fellow commissioners, but it seems from the tone of it, that we could get there, and we could get there with the delivery, we could, you know, access points and some of those, those, getting down into the granular specifics of that, but, but just this kind of broad laundry list of, and wanting to go back to something that we've had before, I don't see any reason that we should do that at this point.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Debbie, may I ask the developer one question since we...
Sure.
Mr. German, a little while ago, there was, I asked about a developmental agreement, and I think you had another opinion on that. So how does that conflict with what the city is saying about the developmental agreement?
Well, yeah, they're saying that it's not valid, basically, and that's P5 zoning over there right now. And that basically says the City Council that voted on 2007 was not meaningless, and we've lived on that for a long time, and we've developed the whole, almost entire center based on it. And, and we did try, we have the spirit of downtown. We spent a lot of time on getting the buildings and all the architecture to look like it. So we have done that. We have a sign where they have the right, the downtown lines, to use that sign to get people downtown for their different events. We have set up parking for them to bring people downtown, so we want to work for the downtown. That's not a, that's not an issue. And if you do walk around out there and you look at it, you'll see how we tried to incorporate this large shopping center to try to look like downtown, which was very difficult to tell. Walkability, I think if you really look at the sidewalks, yes, we can add in the back, and I will work on that, Pablo. As far as parking, we are actually about 20% under what they're requiring, or over what...
Who's "they"?
The different retailers. And as far as being specific...
The different retailers are determining how much parking they need.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was explaining, that they, it's in their leases, and I brought them examples of all the leases that I'm working on. This is the requirement of their parking ratios or their specific number.
What is it on Burleson Crossing right now? Because I've never seen that parking lot full.
There, there, Debbie, I'll explain to you. There's always something wrong with every site I deal on, and I build a lot of shopping centers. And in this one, there was two problems. It was too flat, so we had to bring a lot of dirt to build it up and move water, so we'd have all the water stay in our property or the detention pond and not go on the roads. 400,000 cubic yards, it's a big project. Or, and in this case, it was about 200 feet too deep, because I had to buy it, so I didn't want to buy it. But if it had been 200 feet less, it'd been perfect. And so you see some extra parking, maybe in front of Petco, Specs, some of those areas, when you go down, and I would, I can't put buildings there, they won't let me. They want their visual, vision, you know, be, you know, they can be seen. At the time, that was what it was, and we made the deals.
Okay, thank you.
So that's how it is. Just to answer one, one more thing with that, but that's, that's coming directly out of leases stating that this is what we got to have, and if you don't do it, they may have to make a decision, and their decisions usually, they move on. And I, and I don't mean that like I'm pressing you guys, I'm not. And Cheryl...
Well, you're encouraging us, that's for sure.
Well, I'm telling you how it is, and, and...
And, and I think we've been honest with how, how, how we feel also.
Yeah, and Cheryl, all those roads, if you look at, that's what we're saying we would build. And all the sidewalks, all that, and the differences in the size of the right-of-way, that's what we're disputing. And as far as this warrants list, there's no vehicle to bring this in and just give it to you guys. So this is what we tempted to do, and this is working with them a lot, many means. So I know you guys just saw this, but it wasn't just lightly done, it wasn't just...
And we understand that, we understand that.
But I don't know how else to get approval.
Questions?
That's why you have all this.
So what's our parking now, total? What's the average for a retailer?
There's about, you're supposed to be four or five to one, and it's got your numbers on there. And so if you have 100,000 feet, whatever that works out to be, that's, for every 1,000 feet of building, you got to have four or five parking spaces. For that, for that restaurant, and I'll share with you which one it is right now, it's Long, it's Longhorn Steakhouse, their requirement is specific. They got to have a certain number.
Say that one more time, Longhorn?
Their numbers are specific, they don't do ratios. They'll say, "We need 126 minimum, or 142 minimum." They have so many units, they know what they need.
And we're getting, we're getting into some specifics on things that...
No, I was just wondering what the average parking was, because of the concern of taking away parking spaces.
And then the restaurants that go in line, say Mod Pizza or something like that, in line in small tennis spaces, we always look at 10 to one parking there. So for every 1,000 feet, so if you have a 3,000-foot restaurant, you need 30 parking spaces.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, please.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to deny item 3F. I'd like you guys to come back.
I second that.
Motion and a second, will you please call the roll?
Carrie Kahler.
Aye.
Ismail Harris.
Aye.
Debbie Moore.
Aye.
Cynthia Meyer.
No.
Cheryl Lee.
No.
Pablo Serna.
Aye.
Scott Long.
Aye.
Motion fails, but it doesn't mean that we don't want you here, we just want you guys to go back to the drawing board a little bit.
The motion, motion passed, but the item was not recommended.
The, the motion was to deny.
Yes, the motion passed.
The motion passed to deny, I'm sorry. The item fails to go forward.
Well, it'll still go forward to council, it'll go as a denial, yeah.
With denial.
But you can still go forward to pick counsel.
It'll go forward to council with a denial. Item 3G, hold public hearing and consider action to recommend approval of an ordinance for amendments to Chapter 8, Signs, Section 8.4001, Standards for Temporary Signs, B, Banner Signs of the Bastrop Building Block, B-3 Code, and forward to the April 12, 2022 City Council meeting for adoption.
So them tonight is for P&amp;Z's consideration, so typically signs have always come to P&amp;Z for review or recommendation before going back to council. At the March 8 City Council meeting, council directed the city manager to direct staff to come, to draft some amendments based off of feedback that council provided at the March 8 meeting after receiving public comment about the sign code. So, and I provided, emailed y'all, I believe, yesterday, kind of a summary of how we got where we are today, on kind of a little bit of history of the sign code, and then his, you know, the recent code enforcement efforts that have been underway, that, you know, we adopted the code in 2019, it was, we'd had a sign code for years, and we pulled that in. There were some significant changes to the permanent signs. The temporary sign section actually just got copied forward out of the old code. We didn't see any, we actually had several discussions about it at P&amp;Z, so that section just got copied forward. There were some changes made last summer, and council directed us to make sure we really tried to notify and engage the public first. We sent out four different mailings, we sent email blasts to our downtown business owners. There were some, there was feedback on March 8, and the specific direction was to amend the sign code for temporary signs regarding banners. So what I have come back with is an amendment based off of council's direction that would increase. So currently, you're allowed to have a banner, you have to permit it every two weeks, and you can have it up for, up for eight weeks out of the entire year. This would amend that time that you can have a banner for a total of a year at a time, so every site can have one banner that needs to be permitted, be one fee, one permit per year. That banner itself could be changed out over the year, as long as the banner location on the site doesn't change. So if you hang your banner on the front of your building, in one week it's, you know, couch sale, and the next day it's all recliner sale, you can change out your banner. You don't have to come get a new permit, as long as it's in the same spot. And then we just kind of clarified in the language, making sure that it's clear that banners cannot be placed in the public right-of-way. So they have to be on your own private property, and those locations you can put your banner are your building, your fence, or on stakes in the, in your yard, but not in the site triangle.
So it can be on the building or in a window?
These are outside, these are outside of the building.
All the outside banners, okay.
These are on the outside. And so you, every business now can have one banner. And they're 48 square feet, so that's four feet tall by, I think 12 feet long, was my math, right? I can't do math today.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, we will open the public hearing. And will we have any, we have one person to speak? Three, three people? Oh, that's right, they're already here. Ms. Wumble?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. I would need to ask, though, if it would be appropriate for me to read a letter that was shared with me, that was asked to be shared tonight.
You've got three minutes.
Okay. This is from Betty Gurwitch. It says, "We are thrilled to have a new tenant, Bastrop Medicine Shop, in Neil's old office building. As you may not know, this pharmacy is a part of a group called Medicine Shops, one in, one in Austin, with recognition of being awarded the best of Austin. We have learned that the new pharmacy has been, has many federal and state regulations and quite a lot of expenses to get started. I am sure Omar, the pharmacist in charge, did not expect Bastrop's city ordinances to require him to apply and pay for so many permits for signs that are critical to his business. I have become aware that an A-frame sign at the door of his business is not allowed without a permit, even if the sign on the private property and, and is in compliance with ADA requirements. A professionally-made sign with the business name adhered to the window must be less than 25% of the window. The medicine shop hasn't, has been told to remove or change the sign. This is the only sign that identifies the name of the business. Paper signs and public health information in the window of the pharmacy, listing current services such as COVID information and availability of shots, needs permits. The medicine shop has six paper signs in the window, each listing current pharmacy services offered to the community that are, that must be permitted to show in the sign. An outdoor wall sign requires counting of the screws that are used, the size of the holes, and measuring the distance between screws for a permit to be given. Each permit equates to an additional unexpected, unbudgeted expense, not to mention the time and energy it takes to comply with all the permit applications and work with the city to get permits through the review process. Omar at the Bastrop Medicine Shop has said, "Our main goal is to serve the community of Bastrop while providing a more personal touch. As a business owner, I want to grow my business, be a pharmacist, and I want to help as many people as possible get the best healthcare and pharmacy services in town. However, the current sign code is deterring, deterring us from doing so. As a downtown property owner, I definitely want to comply with all the ordinances. Considering how current sign ordinances negatively impact businesses, I am asking to reconsider the sign ordinance, keeping in mind that the business..." Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't watching, sorry. One last sentence. "The medicine shop and other businesses that are fortunate to bring to our city. Each new business contributes to our local economy. Thank you for your consideration."
And you do understand that we're only considering banner signs tonight?
Yes, I do. And so, can I do mine for my personal now? Is that... I did two.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is right from the beginning of my newsletter that came out the 1st of March. It says, "In my humble opinion, we are in most significant time in the history of our community and our, our county. We are not only growing at rapid, but exponential and record-breaking pace, with home starts, new businesses moving to the area, permits being issued, and people relocating to central Texas. I believe we will look back in a decade, and we will still be talking about the times that we are currently living in. Who served, the dynamic leadership we've assembled, and the things that we've gotten done or we have avoided. The focus that we will need to maintain during this time of rapid growth, growth is a sense of community. With that, in, that, well, sorry. The focus and maintain during this time of rapid growth in a sense of community that has been developed over many decades. We need to continue to work together to seek solutions and challenges to growth." So I was expecting tonight from some correspondents I had had with Paul Hoffman to have some additions and amendments on the sign ordinance, so I need to get back with him and see why those were not on there. But we're talking about authentic Bastrop, and so let me give you an example. This is a sign that's been in our community and displayed on our school campuses and, from businesses for nine years now, and this is considered a bandit sign now. So we put these in metal frames, kind of like Realtor frames, they're displayed up by the front doors of each of our school campuses, and then many of our business community put them in frames and put them right by the front door. And so this is considered illegal now, and this is showing support for our school, and when we have better schools, we can attract new businesses and therefore grow our tax base. So my sponsors have started getting signs saying that these are in violation of the sign code. The sign code is also confusing just to business owners in general. Just today, I had four emails asking if bunting for our Patriot Festival were illegal for today. Red, white, and blue, showing our support for our country's history and our national birthday. So, again, I said, citizens saw a lot of pictures, but I don't think they understood the ramifications of what the sign code and the B-3 code is doing. I think in an attempt not to become Austin, we have become Austin. I think in an attempt not to become Austin, we have become Austin. We're losing that connectivity in what has made us so special and authentic, and I don't want our, us talking about being authentic just become lip service. I think we're all neighbors and stuff, and that we need to work to try and rectify some of the things that were approved that just aren't working, so.
Thank you. Devon Michalak. Devon, I'm sorry. Michalak. Did I at least get that right? No? Why don't you tell me what your name is?
Good evening, my name is Devon Maholic.
Maholic.
I live at 227 Antioch Road, Page, Texas. Unfortunately, because I own a business in downtown Bassdrop, doesn't give me any voting or ability to volunteer or to participate at any kind of city council, so I wish that could be changed, just want to say that right up front. Thank you, good evening, for, thank you so much for letting me come here tonight and speak. I sent out a letter on March 16th to Planning, asking for a point of contact, I never got a return response or acknowledgement that my email was received, so I went ahead and forwarded it to Ishmael, and so he had a copy of it. I just want to make sure and give you an overview of what I said, in case you hadn't heard about it. My husband and I own a small business in downtown Bassdrop called Crosshairs, Texas. I just want to make sure that small businesses like my husband and I's, that our community and our community leaders understand that the code changes and what they're doing to us, so that you understand what's going on. Our businesses feel like the city reaches too far into the rights of business owners and property owners when dictating what can be displayed inside our property and inside our building and inside our businesses, especially without providing a direct point of feedback opportunity. I attended and received, I have a file of all of the cards and invitations to come see all of the new development plans that were going on from 2000, I believe it was 2017. We started our business in 2014 in downtown Bassdrop at 505 Jefferson, and we've had and have been in compliance with our sign since we started. We have a file for our sign application that we filed, I have a copy of it here with me. After all these changes went into effect, we suddenly are no longer in compliance and received two notices that we were going to be fined if we didn't comply. I understand that in 2017, 2019, there was a lot of changes and a lot of communication was sent out to all of us in the community. I also understand during that same time, during 2020 and to 2022, many city positions have changed with new folks than who was in charge in 2017 and 2019, and a lot of the communication is completely different and reaches far less folks that, that own a business or have property that you guys are changing. My goal is to make sure that we can repair the communication that has been taken away from our small businesses. I put down tonight that I'm not in support of the amendments that are going to be made to the banner signs, because I think that you need to incorporate other signs that are affecting Becky Wumble and our school district. We've had a small sandwich board sign for seven years in front of our business, and we use it as a way to kind of engage the community that is not trying to sell a product. And I think that leads us to have that same charm that you get in downtown Bassdrop. So it's not just about trying to sell a product, it's trying to reach our customers and touch people and, and have them understand who we are in Bassdrop.
Thank you. No one else has signed up to speak? At this time, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure I get the understanding, so, so basically, everyone has to adhere to the new code regardless of what you had going on before.
Jennifer, can I?
If it was a legally permitted sign, it's considered legal nonconforming, so. If it was, if it was legally existing on the date of the code that it updated.
Did we permit these types of signs before, previously? So would there have been a, an ability for her to have a permitted legal sign?
Sidewalk signs did not require a permit as long as they were on private property, but if they're in the sidewalk, they weren't permitted at all, outside of the property, so like downtown, all the sidewalk signs that people put out on the very edge, those aren't on their property, so.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
Can you tell why we, why the city has that in the right of way? Why they do that, is there a reason?
Why we're allowing signs into the right of way, or why we're?
Right, I mean, previously, it was, I understand, what was the thinking behind that rule?
So signs in the right of way in general are not allowed, so the ones you see the most common that we, and we just pick those up, they're called bandit signs, so we will mow your lawn, we'll fix your roof, and you just put them all over town. Those are always in the right of way, signs on poles, city poles, they damage our poles, they, they cause problems. Those aren't allowed. Sidewalk signs, again, in the previous code, were only allowed on private property. With the, trying to, again, with having a pedestrian-friendly, walkable code, sidewalk signs are specifically addressed because those are traditionally in, in a downtown or even in some, you know, slower driving areas signage that is used for, you know, to bring people into your business on that walkable scale. So with the code, we allowed the sidewalk signs, and so that's the only sign that is explicitly permitted in the right of way. Does that answer your question?
Right, I think, I think my thinking was, you know, we're, it's about the point about, well, in 2017, I believe you applied. I, I think, I thought I heard that right, but...
Further, yeah, they have a, they have a primary sign, they have a pole sign.
Was that permitted?
Yes.
Okay, so that's legal nonconforming?
Yes.
Okay, so that can stay, it doesn't change? And as far as some of those, she mentioned a sign that interacts with the public, is that on the private property, or is that in the public right of way?
The ones that we cited were in the right of way, I believe.
Okay.
So.
Because it's an opinion on the sign that's in the public right of way? I'm guessing that she said it was not really selling anything, it was just kind of a way to interact? So we're kind of doing, everybody has to play by the same rules kind of thing?
Yes, and part of the problem with signs in general, I'm trying to say, this sign because it's a, you know, selling this kind of thing or promoting this kind of thing, we, I have, if, if, in general, if you have to read the sign to determine whether or not it's allowed, that starts to infringe on free speech. So we, that's why we go by types of signs, so it's sidewalk signs. We regulate how big they are and where they go. Same with, you know, bandit signs, so bandit signs are allowed, you know, on the weekends, you know, from 5:00 PM to, you know, 8:00, 8:00 PM on Sunday, because that's when you're putting up your garage sale sign or your real estate sign, those kind of things. So that's, we regulate by type of sign and dimensions of signs.
Is this done in other communities?
Yes.
Is this the first change that you're presenting of what is going to be a lot more changes? I, I understand that...
This is all I've been directed to.
This is all you've been, okay.
Are there any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. And this is going from, explained, the banner signs, you used, you used to have to have a permit, pay for a permit anytime you put up a banner sign.
Yeah, so you could have a banner sign for two weeks.
For two weeks.
And then you'd have to get a new permit, so.
What this is allowing is for a year. We pay one, one fee.
And what that was specifically in reference to was the Best of Bassdrop signs that are up, that get awarded yearly, and so again, you can't really carve out an exemption for Best of Bassdrop, and so we carved, so they made an exemption that you can have one sign for the whole year, so if that, if you choose that to be your Best of Bassdrop sign, you can do that, but, you know, another business that didn't get a Best of Bassdrop sign that just says they're the, the best gas station in town can put up a sign that says that for a year or two, so.
I do want to commend council for, you know, hearing from the public and making that change. I thought that was a smart change. And tonight, I, I know it's clear we're only going to be making a motion and voting on this particular change, but I do, from before, you know, when we first started doing the B3 codes, and I still don't now understand why we're placing so much emphasis and nickel and diming, I'm sorry, on signs. And I do hope that people from the community and businesses do continue to come, because I think that some of what's in the B3 code is placing some unneeded restrictions on businesses. The chalkboard sign, I had a business owner that, that advised me that he couldn't get his sign permit approved, and he was opening his business, he needed some way to advertise his business. So he put the little chalkboard thing out and was, I don't know if he said he was cited, but he was certainly talked to about it. So in those circumstances, that's hindering his business. So I do think we can nickel and dime stuff to death, and we can nitpick stuff to death to where it, why? Why are we really doing it, so, but we don't really know what those things are until people bring them to us to let us know. This is how it's hurting my business, and I hope that we will continue to be open to listening to business owners and working with them as we deal with each individual piece of this ordinance.
And I'm with you, I commend the council for what they did.
Jennifer, banners, will those be considered temporary signs?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, they're still temporary, so they'll once a year have to get a permit, and then...
Right, so is there a monthly fee also they must pay for a temporary sign, or is that just a one-time?
So for banner signs, it'll be one fee, they'll get one permit a year, so it's one-year timeline, so every year if they want a banner sign, they can come back in and re-permit, and it's 58.50 for the fee.
Can you remind me how, do you permit the sandwich board signs, the fold-out sign?
Yes.
You do?
They are, yeah, they're permitted, so, and it's one per business, or one per site within a certain distance of the door, so you can't put yours down the street at the corner, that, and which was, and that's part of it is to control, you know, sign clutter, you get too many signs in one spot, it's a lot to look at. It's also problematic for ADA on sidewalks, and sometimes in site triangles outside of the downtown.
Is there any reason that you couldn't allow it and then, but have like a nuisance quotient, where, you know, declare it a nuisance if it impedes ADA or if it? Because I, I think they're really charming and they direct traffic, so if there's a way to expand that, then, but keep in mind, you know, that, you know, we need to be able to get impaired people where they need to go, and, you know...
And that's some of it, is when people put signs not on their property, then you've got to track down who it actually belongs to, and...
Well, but, I mean, if it's a sign for a business, that shouldn't really be that hard, because their business name's probably on it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's an option, but the direction of the code was to have people proactively permit them so that it was less...
It's something that might be considered in the future, but it's not what we're considering tonight. Mr. Harris?
So do they, is there, I guess, if you will, a package deal, right? Do you, or for each, for all of your signs, so if you have multiple signs on your business property, can you just pay one permit, or do you have to pay a different permit?
You pay a permit fee for each sign you put on.
Okay. So they, so pretty much if someone wants to, in this instance, with the, we are BISD, they have to pay just to have that, plus what they have for the business?
So the BISD signs, the bandit signs, aren't allowed except for...
On the weekends, right?
Except for on the weekends, so.
So they just have to come up with another way to advertise that?
Yeah.
Any more questions? If not...
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the amendments for the banner signs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Pass is unanimous, thank you. I am looking for my agenda. There it is. All right. We move on to item four, update. Update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items.
We have not had any items taken since the last regular meeting for P&amp;Z to city council. No updates.
And your probably, your monthly projects volume report.
So we have slowed down a bit this month, I think we're, for, this is for the month of February, we only had five new home permits, that being said, Bassdrop Grove, which is behind Seton Hospital, just came online with their first section, so, which is, I think, 90 houses or so in the first section.
So they'll be back.
So we'll have, so we, yeah, I believe we got in at least 20 or 30 permits this month already. So there's some lulls in our, but planning applications are pretty steady, so, and you'll notice an uptick in signs specifically.
Signs never leave us.
And then our quarter, we haven't had, we haven't hit another quarter yet, so this is just the same information from the last quarter, so.
5C, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners, if particular items be listed on future agendas. Do we have any requests?
I'd like to request that the sandwich board signs come back. That the sandwich board sign requirements come back.
When you say sign, sandwich board requirements?
Sidewalk signs.
Sidewalk, okay.
I would like to request that we revisit the sign ordinance, the whole sign ordinance, because I agree with you 100% Carrie, but I think there's some window sign issues, I think there's issues on here and all over the place with so many parts, so I would like to request that we revisit the sign ordinance codes.
I, I agree with you.
We may need a workshop for that.
And like Cheryl said, it's a lot of nitpicking on some things, and...
And I think there's a lot of things to consider, because if you're saying to me, if I'm reading this right, what are we then going to do with all of the, "I'll buy your house for free"? Are we going to go pick all those signs up, and then how does that impact campaign signs? Those are bandit signs by this...
No, they're not.
By this description of...
So, so political signs are regulated by the state, and we don't touch those.
Okay, great, and then, but the other signs, because I'm like...
As spoken by the newly elected city council member.
Now we can only put them out on the weekends? There's not minimal places we can put them out. But then, yeah, we're, what about all the little, "We'll mow your yard" and all that stuff? Are we going to be picking those up? There's no way to sometimes even know who those signs are, because all they have is a phone number. I mean, I, I think that that needs to be better defined, bandit signs.
I mean, hopefully, they'd pick them up, since they're their signs, they'd probably want to reuse them, but... But I think, I, I agree, and if we're thinking that people need to abide by this, by our new code, which, which I fully support, we need to help people, you know, if we're going to make it a little more challenging in one aspect, then let's make it easier for people to see it.
Do we need to request a workshop with city council?
I know, I'll, I'll take this request to the city manager and get direction, because this is something that'll take more staff time, so we have to, we've got a lot of projects going on that we have to balance, and so that'll be a question we ask of him.
Item five. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're out of here, thank you.